Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet zoning board of appeals. Ms. Roberts, would you please call the room?
Can you turn the volume up again?
Mr. Felkoff.
Can you all mute yourself that we will not speak? Go ahead, Ms. Roberts.
Mr. Felkoff.
I had it. I had it. Damn.
Sorry, calling the roll, Mr. Felkoff.
Here.
Thank you, sorry. Mr. Glittard.
Here.
Mr. Pelletson.
Here.
Ms. Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here. Ms. Roberts, could you please let the folks know how they are not on, but how they can connect and and find all the information about this meeting?
This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a stay-at-home order issued by Governor J.B. Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the zoning board of appeals, and this evening we are conducting our business in compliance with state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local cable access Channel 6. It is also being broadcast on the Internet on YouTube Live.
I can't see anybody.
And the URL for that is www.youtube.com/ villageofwillmet/live. To participate in the meeting, you can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the Village's website at www.willmet.com and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There is a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on Channel 6 or on YouTube and call into the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. If you are using, I'm sorry, the phone number for the meeting is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 478-597-262. If you're using the phone, press *6 to mute and unmute yourself. The staff does not have the ability to unmute any participants, whether using Teams or the telephone. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live and emails to comdev@willmet.com. Member of the Village staff will read your comment to the zoning board. All comments to the zoning board of appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes as we typically do. For our meeting guests joining by Teams when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption of the proceedings, and please keep your video turned off so that the board members can be seen. Mr. Chairman, it's all you.
Thank you. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 4, 5.4.F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at the next regularly scheduled meeting on June 8. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendation. There's one more small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by a majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, we have seven members. Tonight, we have five members. So we need four of the five members to affirmatively vote on your application to receive a positive vote. Three to two obviously does not apply. In recognition of this, when we do not have all members, as we do not tonight, of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night, tonight, the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is May 19. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please take your name and address and tell us why exactly your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from the Village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who may wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have a comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as shortened to the point as possible. Any comments received through YouTube chat, Teams chat, or email will be read into the record at this time, at that time. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would like you to raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
You.
Thanks. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case of the evening?
We've had a little bit of a change to the agenda, so our first case tonight is 2021-Z14, 1300 Middlebury Lane, and the applicants are here.
Can you repeat that? Which one is that?
1300 Middlebury, the Goddard's.
I got it, yes.
At least, I think they were here.
Yep, I'm here, sorry. So, good evening, Chairman and the rest of the members of the board. Matt Goddard here, owner of 1300 Middlebury Lane. Actually, at this time, I'd like to request a continuance to see if we can get on the agenda for the next scheduled meeting.
Can I have a motion to approve a continuance?
I'll move to continue the case of 2021-Z14 until the next scheduled meeting.
I'll second it.
It's moved to second it. Can we take a vote on this, Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Felkoff.
Yes.
Mr. Glittard.
Yeah, I think you might be muted.
Delia, can you?
Delia, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletson.
Yes.
Ms. Urban.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider.
Yes. So this case will be continued to May 19. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can we hear the next case, please, Ms.?
Our next case is 2021-Z18, 1155 Willmet Avenue, and the applicant, I believe, is here. I think I saw her.
I'm here, yes, I'm here. Good evening, everybody. I would also like to request a continuance, if I may.
Can I have a motion to approve a continuance?
I move to continue case number 2021-Z-18 until May 19.
I'll second it.
Take a vote, Ms. Roberts.
Mr. Felkoff.
Yes.
Mr. Glittard.
Yes.
Mr. Pelletson.
Yes.
Ms. Urban.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider.
Yes. So this case has been continued to May 19. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case, please, Ms. Roberts.
Our next case is 2021-Z16, 424 Linden Avenue, and our applicants are here.
Hi, my name is Mary Rose McManus. Larry Cook is not with me tonight because I, too, am going to be asking for a continuance for next week's meeting.
Have a motion.
I move to continue case 2021-Z16 until May 19.
I'll second that.
Take a vote.
Mr. Felkoff.
Yes.
Mr. Glittard.
Yes.
Mr. Pelletson.
Yes.
Ms. Urban.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider.
Yes. So this case has been continued to May 19. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case, Ms. Roberts, please.
The next case that we're actually going to hear is 2021-Z15. This is 222 Lockerbie Lane. This is a request for a two-foot fence height variation and a fence openness variation to permit the replacement of a six-foot tall solid fence in the side, I'm sorry, in the rear yard of a double furnished lot, and our applicant is here.
Please introduce yourself and present your case, please. Is the applicant here?
He's here, but he's muted.
Is it John Stutz?
Yes, it is, and he's still muted.
Mr. Stutz, are you? Can you hear us?
You should be able to find a little button on the top with the microphone on it. If you click on that, it'll unmute you. We don't have the capacity to do that. You have to do it yourself, unfortunately.
We heard you earlier, Mr. Stutz. Lisa, I'm not sure what the procedure is, but do you think it would make sense to, is it possible to move on to the next item on the agenda while Mr. Stutz tries to figure out how to unmute, or is that not a possibility?
No, if you all agree to do that, that's perfectly acceptable.
I mean, I don't want to inconvenience him, but...
That may be the best.
Is there some way of contacting him in the meantime?
You know, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Dennis Stonequest from Loyola Academy. I'm next in line. I do know John's son. He works at Loyola, so I will text him now and tell him to reach out to his dad.
Okay, thank you.
In the meantime, I think we'll go on to the next case, if that's okay. Do I need a formal approval to go on to the next case? Let's do that and hope Mr. Stutz can connect with us. So, Ms. Roberts, could you please call the next case regarding Laramie Avenue?
Sure. Our next case is 2021-Z17. This is 1100 Laramie Avenue. Request for a 4.73 feet variation to permit the construction of new equipment.
Okay, are we? Are we ready to hear from the applicant?
Can people see it? Hold on one second.
Yes, we can, Sarah. I'd like to introduce myself again. My name is Dennis Stonequest, and I serve as Executive Vice President at Loyola Academy. Tonight, we have Sarah Lundgren from Kirk Sexton Partners, who is our lead architect and someone we have been blessed to work with, as she has not... Someone's got to mute for me, right? If you're not me or Sarah, please mute. Whoever's taking out the garbage. I just wanted to take a chance to not only say that we are grateful for the Village's work with us to get to this point, not just in the theater, but in all we've done in our campus master plan. We've probably been in front of you and the board numerous times, but as you can see on this slide we have done, our natatorium expansion, and I hope you have all had a chance to come by and see. And with that, we had the opportunity to work with our neighbors to talk about a subject of community or campus parking and circulation, which we believe has been a big olive branch to the neighbors, and this has been an opportunity for us and our neighbors to collaborate. And it's really been a wonderful experience, and I think we're building on some great relationships. We've also been able to tackle some stormwater. We've been able to tackle other things like pedestrians, circulation, safety, bike facilities, enhanced student spaces. And now we're here to talk about the Performing Arts Center, which, as you can see, the related site landscape and circulation in the upper right-hand corner up there. Phase 2 site plan and amendments have been carefully designed in response to our neighbors' their concerns and in collaboration with the village. Most importantly, and it's built for our student experience, which the arts are a huge part of the Jesuit education. I believe we're here for a small ask that I think will, is mainly to benefit the neighbors. So I will turn it over to Sarah Lundgren from Kirk Sexton Partners for the specifics.
Thanks, Dennis, and thank you to the committee here for taking the time to look at our request. Really, what we have is an ask for a fence that would be higher than the normal standard. We have a fence that is enclosing an adiabatic chiller plant on the east side of the property. Just for orientation purposes, Illinois Avenue is here, Laramie is over here, and I-94 is over here. So the plant is at the far east side of the property, just directly adjacent to the Edens Expressway. On that east elevation, everyone's familiar with seeing the Loyola campus here. This area here is actually pretty shrouded by trees. This is essentially an area where we have a scene shop and an access and egress point for the building, and right between those two openings in the building is the fence. You can see it right here. We're looking for a fence that would be positioned and kind of nested behind the trees. We're looking for a fence that would be 11'4" in height above grade, and the purpose of this fence is really to allow for acoustical mitigation for noise from the adiabatic chiller that's inside this area. We believe it meets all other village standards except for the height variance, and we have some details that we provided in our package for the fence. It's built out of very sturdy galvanized tubes for that height requirement. We also have responded to the variation standards on the screen, and we have Hal Frank in here. Frank, who is here tonight in case there are any logistical questions, and I would also be happy to answer questions. I'm sure Dennis would as well.
Any questions for the applicants?
This is Riley Pelletson. I'll ask a question, and that is, is this fence necessary for the operation of the chiller?
It is not. It's necessary so that we can keep the noise down from the adiabatic chiller. So it's not providing any kind of ventilation. What it's really doing is it's going up to the height of the chiller, which is the thing that is pretty operative in terms of acoustical mitigation.
And I understand that. It also faces I-94. Who are you protecting from the sound? You know, and your scene shop is there. I'm not sure what the purpose is of this. You're not protecting the neighbors.
Well, there's a neighbor here at the corner here. I'm actually going to go to the actual site plan right here. I guess you could, I haven't been participatory to acoustical conversations where we've looked at how this corner of the building protects this client or, sorry, this resident. We are trying to do everything we can to make sure that we do not add any kind of noise from our campus out into the environment.
Well, that's very thoughtful. And this would focus the noise generally upwards rather than laterally? Is that the idea?
Yes, I think that that's correct. I think it maintains it interior. If the, from our conversations with our acoustical engineer, which is Threshold Acoustics in Chicago, as long as the height of the walls are at the level of the top of the equipment, no noise will get out.
Wow, that's impressive. Okay.
And I think there's two other pieces is, I mean, in a theater where you're listening to sound, I mean, you want to keep the acoustics out of the building or the area as much as possible, but also, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, it's a site, such a beautiful, beautiful building, and then to go around back and have a large chiller back there sort of is out of character for what the building is.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Well, Mr. Stonequest, I hear what you're saying. I really hope that the walls that you're building will be sufficient to keep out the noise, because if they don't keep out the noise of the chiller, they're certainly not going to keep out the rodent eyes from I-94 going past.
Well, every little bit helps, I guess.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicants?
Yes, Maria's muted.
Maria, you have a question?
I do, I'm sorry. How much noise are you expecting this chiller to make? And you're expecting the fence to actually bring it down to zero?
I'm not in the position to answer the technical question of how much noise that the chiller is going to make. I was participatory to ambient noise measurements that we took on top of the existing building, and our goal is to ensure that we don't have any ambient noise coming off of our building that exceeds that condition. That's all I can say as an architect. If you're looking for something more technical, I would request that we get threshold involved.
Is threshold here aligned?
They are not here, no. I don't think our team anticipated the need for that request during this conversation.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicants?
Yeah, I have one question. I understand about the soundproofing, and I think I understand about the height. So first of all, is the chiller itself 11'4" high?
Yes, it is. This is exactly at the top of the chiller.
And has there been a study done to determine whether the noise is coming from the top of the chiller, or could you use a shorter fence and still contain all of the noise because the noise is coming from something that's lower than the very top of the chiller?
Our acoustical engineer and our mechanical engineer have been working in tandem with each other on this design, and the result was that the fence needed to be at the height of the top of the chiller.
Okay. And assume there was no fence there at all, and setting aside the question of noise, is there a hazard to people who, whether they be intentional or otherwise, are there and getting able to get close to the chiller? For example, are there electrical connections and those kinds of things that absolutely require that there be fencing in order to guard against hazards?
Yes, I definitely think that we would not want people to be able to come right up to the chiller. There's also a transformer from ComEd in this location as well, so there is reason to block off this area, I think visually from a safety standpoint and from an acoustic standpoint, but the reason for it being so high is for acoustics. I think also visual, to Dennis's point. I don't think, you know, I've observed buildings in the past where, you know, this large mechanical equipment is evident. There's a building right off, kind of closer to Chicago, that has huge air handling units on the roof, and I don't think it represents anyone well to see that type of thing, so there are three things working at play here. But the performance is really the main reason.
I don't know if it's, if one speaks to the other, but the ARC has seen this and is, we're working with the ARC, and actually, they've become very interested into what the material is, because they believe it's an important piece to the appearance of the building. So I don't know if that makes any difference, but the appearance review has seen this.
Yeah, we had a very productive meeting with them last week on Monday. I'd just like to second what Dennis said about that.
To Mr. Stonequest's point about protecting the interior of the building from noise of the chiller, is this a four-sided fence, or I was under the impression it was three-sided?
It is three sides. It directly abuts the precast wall at the scene shop, so it basically is three-sided from that point, and you can see that maybe in this plan here. There's an access point here and the precast wall and the fence right here.
And to the south of the mechanical well is a student space, a student gathering space, sort of a student lounge, and to the north of that mechanical well is the scene shop, which we plan on using for not just the theater portion, but also our daily classes, our fine and performing arts classes, also our architecture program. So I understand that most of the stuff will be in the front, most of the entertainment and most of the audience, but we will have programming in the back as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Here, come here.
Somebody is...
Mr. Stutz, I think you're muted.
Mute yourself or... Thank you. No, 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 please, can you? Thank you. I think we're good shape. Anybody, any comments, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Hal Frank, the attorney for Loyola. Could I make one or two comments?
Sure.
One, just a house cleaning matter, technical matter. I don't know, at the beginning of the meeting, you asked for people that would be testifying before you to be sworn in, and I saw the first two applicants swear to the accuracy and truth of their testimony. Just for the record, I don't know if you want everybody that's testified on behalf of Loyola to state for the record that everything they've told you is truthful or not.
Well, I had assumed... Mr. Stutz, can you please silence your... Thank you. I had assumed when I asked for anybody that would be willing to testify that I would ask them to be sworn in.
Okay, I'm good with that. It's just that I only saw two people on the screen at the time, so I didn't know if that covered everybody, but I'm comfortable, if you're comfortable, that everybody, Sarah and Dennis, I know, you know...
I raised my hand. I was...
Okay, good.
I did also.
Okay, thank you. The second thing, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, following up on the chairman, your, your opening comments, that we have put in a detailed response to how we believe this request satisfies both the general standards for variation and the specific factors to be considered for fence relief. And they, they appear at page, they started page 19 of our application package. And consistent with what the chairman said, we're not gonna go through those one by one, but we do believe all the standards will be met. And that at the end of the day, you know, the fence, as Dennis Stonequist said, and Sarah, you know, will be beneficial to the neighbors and also the students of Loyola and the future patrons of the theater. So I just wanted to state for the record that we do believe, you know, all the standards are, are satisfied here, and that this will be, the very, granting the variation will be a benefit to all. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicants from the members of the board? Do we, if I hear, I don't hear any. Ms. Roberts, have we, anyone else in contact with us who wants to testify in this case?
We have not received any other communication.
Ms. Lundgren? I, I have one more question, Reinhard, and that is, I assume that you guys put this chiller at ground level rather than on the roof, simply because you had the space to do so?
We did. Um, there is, the, we have a mechanical well that's built into the building that has a similar relationship between equipment that's up there and the top of it, so that that acoustically also does not affect the neighborhood. We have a number of air, large air handling units up there, so it's, there is no more space in that area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions from the board, I, and we haven't heard from anyone else, I suggest we close the testimony and ask for a motion.
Is there anybody online or, Ms. Roberts?
Ms. Roberts said there wasn't.
Oh, she did. Okay, I missed that. I'm sorry.
Can we have a motion?
I'll go ahead. I'll move to recommend granting a request for 4.73 foot fence height variation to permit the construction of an equipment enclosure at 1100 Laramie Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Falco?
I've got three reasons why I can support the, the variance. The first is, I think there is a need, obviously, regarding the chiller and the Commonwealth Edison equipment. So in a sense, the higher you can get that fence, the better it's going to be if in fact the chiller itself is 11 feet, 4 inches. So I think for purposes of guarding, it's important. I think the placement is also of some interest. It's up against essentially a driveway, which is up against Eden's Expressway. It's really, I don't think anybody will ever see it unless they're going down that driveway. Whether or not it looks pretty or not, almost to me doesn't matter. It's just, it's out of the way, and I don't even think the neighbors on the other side will see it to the north, just because there's enough trees that block. And then the third is if you can get some soundproofing value out of it. I'm not convinced of that completely, but if there is any soundproofing value, then it's worth having it up there, and it's worth spending apparently what is probably the extra money to make it the fence both tall and provide some soundproofing qualities. So I can support the applicant.
This is Maria. I, I agree with Brad's points. And I would just add that in recent meetings, we've heard quite a bit of information about the decibel levels associated with air conditioning units on residential properties. This particular chilling unit looks much, much larger than what a typical home has. And although the folks speaking for Loyola tonight don't have the data, I have to believe that it's a loud unit. And I think any measures taken to keep the sound down is a good thing. Although it probably will be drowned out by the traffic on the Edens. But I can support this.
Any other comments?
This is Didier Glattard. I would agree with one point they made, which is, they're building a very nice building, and to have that equipment just sitting there next to it would really take away from the beauty of it. It also is, I would consider it nice of them to spend the money, build a fence to hide this equipment, and do their best effort to, you know, make the experience better. I will support this.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out, I believe that the entire face of the building on the east side is concrete, solid concrete. Are there any windows on the face of that building?
There are two openings, but no windows.
Right. So, and the, the appearance aspect of it is, there is some substance to that, but fairly minimal. It's appearance for people who are on the campus and walking by. It certainly is not gonna help the neighbors or people driving by on I-94. And if, for security purposes, you don't need an 11-foot, 4 fence. An 8-foot fence would more than suffice for that. And the ComEd Transformer doesn't need to be secured. There are Transformers all around, all of our neighborhoods, that don't have fences around them. So I have some issues with what has been represented and disappointment that we're making this on the basis of sound mitigation without any actual data about the sound mitigation, and without anybody who can speak to that. But that said, I think the points that have been made about it's out of the way, nobody's gonna see it, and so why not will carry the day.
Thank you. I also can support it. I think from an aesthetic point of view, to shield that, and it's sort of in keeping with the facade on the east side and in general on the rest of the building, as well as the, the acoustic mitigation that clearly will help, even though it probably would not be necessary, given the exposure that it has to the highway and, and not immediately connected to the, or directly related to the residents. So I... Thank you. Ms. Roberts, can you, can we call a vote?
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Glattard?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this will go with a positive recommendation to the village board, who will meet on June 8th. And, uh...
I'm muted.
Mr. Stutz, we need, that's you. Thank you. Can we go to the next case, please?
Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you.
Reinhard, before we move on, I would just move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report recommendations for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2021 C-7.
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Glattard?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
I'm muted.
Chairman Schneider?
What's so funny?
Mr. Stutz, please, if that's you, please mute your... I think you have to...
I'm muted.
Either, either an iPhone or both, and you should turn one off. Mr. Stutz, we can't go on if you could not...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to communicate.
Okay.
Hello?
We can hear you.
So we will, shall we go back to Mr. Stutz, please?
Yes, we can do that.
Go ahead, Roberts.
Our next case is 2021 C-15 through 22 Lockery Lane. For a 2-foot fence height variation and a fence openness variation to permit the replacement of a 6-foot tall solid fence in the rear yard of a double frontage lot. And our applicant is here.
Please, Mr. Stutz, please make your case. Can you hear us? Please go ahead, Mr. Stutz. Can you hear us?
I also see two images, three images of Mr. Stutz. I don't know if anybody else is seeing that.
Yes, we do. I think that's part of the problem.
A new record.
Hello? This is John Stutz.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Stutz. Ms. Roberts, I don't know how to proceed with this. You have any suggestions?
Well, that's good. He should be able to do it now.
Yeah, it looks like we've got just one connection now, which should be good, maybe.
Can you hear us, Mr. Stutz? Can you please proceed? If you can hear us.
Yes, I, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Now, go ahead.
Thank you. It was, it wasn't of my doing. I'm, I requested a variance of 2 feet for my backyard fence. Okay? Which butts up against Old Glenview Road. I'm located on Lockerbie Lane, and the back of my yard butts up against Old Glenview Road. Okay, where I wish to replace a 20-year-old fence, 6-foot wooden fence that I had installed in 2002, some 20 years ago, and it needs to be replaced. Okay. Now, I would like to replace it with another solid wood 6-foot fence. Now, my neighbors to the south of me, along Lockerbie Lane, whose homes also butt up against Old Glenview Road, I have 13 neighbors who also have 6-foot solid wood fences. At least 12 of the 13 do. The other one has an 8-foot solid wooden fence. Okay, so I would like to replace my existing 6-foot fence with another 6-foot fence. Okay? I think the 6-foot fence is needed to keep out the pollution and the noise, and certainly is a buffer against the noise from the Eden Expressway, which is just to the east of our property. Okay? I think that would be a deterrent to property values if we don't have a 6-foot fence. So that's, that's my position. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stutz. Any questions for Mr. Stutz?
Yes, Mr. Stutz. Included in the packet with your application are two fence permit applications, one from 1997 and one from 2002, so approximately five years later. And I assume that those are for fences, the, the current fence that's there? Is that true?
Yes, that's true. The, the current fence is there from 2002.
And are you looking to make a change in the style of fence or height of fence from what is already there?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's, it's exact, it's exactly the same style and height.
Any other questions for Mr. Stutz?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. You said it's the same style and height. It's right now, it looks like a stockade fence?
Yes.
And in the packet is, on page 1.8, a color photograph of a nice-looking fence of some sort. What is that?
That is a, oh, let's see, I think that's, I think that is a a PVC fence. It's, it's made out of man-made material. It's not made out of wood. It's longer-lasting. And it's a, of a different color. It's all color of white.
Why was it included in the packet?
I, I wanted to inform the village of exactly what I have in mind.
Well, I thought you said a moment ago it was going to be a stockade fence similar to what is currently on the property.
It's, it's, it's gonna be similar as far as height, but the stockade type of fence, although it's predominant up and down Lockerbie Lane, no, I requested, or I would prefer to have a different color, a different material, longer-lasting fence.
So the picture that's on the, or with the materials, is the type of fence you're intending to erect?
Yes, sir.
All right. And will it follow the exact same line that...
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes, yes, indeed. It will, exactly the same, yes, sir.
All right, because it takes a sort of jog in the middle of your property from the outside, obviously I didn't go into your property, but from the outside, it appears that it actually jogs in a couple of places to go around something.
Well, it, it, very good question. Thank you, sir, and you are correct. It does a little jog at the corner of my property because of the fact of a tree has, has grown and is growing out towards Old Glenview Road. So I asked the, uh, the, the tree, or the fence people to cut the fence to go around the tree and not obstruct the tree. Yes, you're, you're right. So there's, there's a 3-foot deviation around the tree, not to restrict the tree, but to give the tree full access to growing. Yes.
And then you indicated that there are other people, for example, the person just to the south of your property, who have fences, which are 6 feet tall fences. In fact, you almost can't tell the difference between your fence and your neighbor's fence. Is theirs approximately the same age as your fence?
Let's see, the same age, probably are, it could be the same age. They're very identical in their appearance. But, but that, that continues all the way down Old Glenview, Glenview Road, not just to my neighbors next door, but to the next 12 or 13 residents have the same identical 6-foot wooden fences. Yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Stutz, this is Maria Urban. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it is only the neighbor immediately to the south of you who also has a double frontage lot. The other, the other 12 neighbors with stockade fences have them positioned in their backyards. And their yards do not abut a street. Their backyards do not. Is that correct? That, that was my impression when I was out there today. That was my impression when I was out there today.
Well, no, no. I think that's incorrect because their properties, like mine, back up to Old Glenview Road.
Are you, Mr. Stutz, when we're talking about, I think Maria Urban is talking about the frontage road, going south from your property on the frontage road.
Okay.
There is one to the south.
Yes.
There's another fence like your present fence.
Yes.
And then I didn't notice any other fences on frontage road all the way to the commercials end of the street. Am I wrong?
There is a housing complex two doors down on Old Glenview Road. I'm going to say it's a multifamily, like a townhouse development.
Yes, yes.
And they do not have a stockade fence. So the people that do have a stockade fence, who are your neighbors, their properties do not go all the way back to Old Glenview Road from Lockerbie.
No, I'm sorry, but no, that's not correct. The condominiums that you refer to are four or five, six houses away to the south of where I'm located. And my five or six neighbors, their properties are just like mine, and they butt up against Old Glenview Road. And then the condominiums are there alongside Old Glenview Road. And then, and then they continue, the fences, six-foot solid wooden fences, continue around the condominiums and then extend further to the south.
Lisa, I wonder if you could put up exhibit 1.0 from Mr. Stutz's packet.
Let me give it a whirl here.
Okay, thank you.
Can y'all see that?
Yes.
So looking at this picture, Mr. Stutz, your property is the hashed property. And to the north of you is Lockerbie Park. So there's no fencing there, no stockade fencing. And then there's one lot to the south of you that has the fence that looks pretty much like a continuation. So he's missing all of this. Did he X himself out?
Mr. Stutz, are you still there?
I show him as in the lobby.
Uh-oh, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Stutz, can you see the exhibit on the screen?
Let's see, yes, I can.
So your property is the hash-marked property, and it runs from Lockerbie down to Old Glenview Road. And the property immediately to the south of you does the same.
Right.
And then, beginning with the next property, that property on the very corner hits Old Glenview Road. But all of the other homes have rear yard fences that do not butt up against the road. And I'm only saying this, I think you're in a unique situation with a frontage property.
Okay.
And I'm just trying to draw a distinction between you
That's fine.
and 11 of your neighbors.
Sure, sure. That's fine. But, okay, I understand, okay. But, okay, but Old Glenview Road, okay, is running, I mean, our properties, my property, the people next door to me, and the other six, seven people going to the south, their properties, they all butt up to Old Glenview Road. I mean, there's no other place where they stop. They butt up to Old Glenview Road. They have six-foot solid wooden fences.
I think we can stipulate that...
It's okay. You know, if I cannot replace my dilapidating six-foot, 20-year-old wooden fence, then I will not change it. Okay, that's fine with me.
Mr. Stutz, you're jumping to a conclusion.
Oh, well, I do that because I'm an old person.
Any further questions for Mr. Stutz? Hearing none, anybody, have we heard anything?
I have a question. Mr. Stutz, have you considered putting another stockade fence, which would match the other fences going down the street?
You mean to match the fence that I have up there now?
Yes.
I did consider that. Yes, sir, I did. And I thought it wasn't very appealing, and it didn't appear very nice. And I liked the new type of PVC, man-made material fence in a color of white. Yes, that would accentuate my house, which I just had repainted and re-roofed. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, Ms. Roberts, have we, anybody else out there who wants to comment on this case?
I don't see anybody else out there who wants to comment on this case.
If I may, can I close the testimony and have a motion, please?
I move to recommend granting a request for a two-foot fence height variation and a fence openness variation to permit the replacement of a six-foot-tall solid fence in the rear yard of a double-frontage lot
We need five.
at 222 Lockerbie Lane, in accordance with the plan submitted.
A second? We need a second. Did he have a little second? Yes, thank you. Maria Urban, your motion.
I can approve this request. The fact that Mr. Stutz's property fronts on two roadways, I think creates a very difficult situation. Any family would want privacy in their rear yard, and this is a unique situation, not only with the double frontage, but the fact that Old Glenview Road really serves as the frontage road for the Edens Expressway. And I'll grant you that there are commercial properties between the expressway and Mr. Stutz's home. But nevertheless, I think it it creates a hardship that makes it difficult to use, to fully use his property. I'll support this.
Thank you. Go ahead to the air.
You're in a vote?
Mr. Glattard, do you have comments?
No comments. I agree.
Thank you. Any other comments by anyone?
My only comment is, and I'll support the application, but the key, I think, to what Maria said was that this is a double-frontage lot. And we've discussed in the past six-foot-tall fences, and there have been issues with six-foot-tall fences. But this does seem to be unique. It is a double frontage, and it does, in a sense, front on commercial property, which is right underneath the Edens Expressway. So I can support it because of the uniqueness of this particular application.
Thank you. I can, I can do, I can support it. The Old Glenview Road in that section, there are no sidewalks on either side of that road, so there's clearly limited, if any, pedestrian traffic. And so, and a unique situation. To respond to Mr. Glattard in terms of the type of fence and the color and so forth, and that's really not under our purview. But I would just point out that on the north side, as the frontage road comes down from Glenview Road, I recall that we may have had that case. But in any case, there's a white fence as you turn the corner onto Lockerbie Lane.
She's mine.
So I can... No other comments? Can we take a vote?
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Glattard?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
I have one more question for Mr. Stutz. Do you play poker by any chance? I'd like to play with you.
I appreciate that. And yes, I do on occasion, and I will make a special occasion to involve you. Yes.
Thank you. So, Mr. Stutz, this will go to the positive recommendation to the Village Board, which meets on June 8th. You may want to be there. And I appreciate coming here tonight. Thank you.
I'm going to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals case for case number 2021 Z15. Good luck, Mr. Stutz.
Thank you. I appreciate all your input and all your assistance. Thank you. I don't know if they can hear me.
We can hear you.
You got me. Voting on your motion. Mr. Falco?
Yeah. Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Glattard?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin? Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you. And can we go on to the next case, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Our next case?
Thank you, Mr. Stutz. You can sign off if you like.
Thank you very much. I'm usually asleep at this hour. Thank you.
Okay, good night.
Our next case is 2021 Z19, 1605 Elmwood Avenue. This is a request for a 126.47 square foot lot coverage variation, a 1.5-foot sideyard setback variation, a 2.58-foot combined sideyard setback variation, a 2.58-foot combined sideyard chimney setback variation, and a 2.58 combined sideyard window well setback variation to permit the construction of a new home. And our applicants are here.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Brown, please. It's your floor. You got the floor.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm glad to follow up to a feel-good story of the night. So I'm very pleased. We are requesting a variance principally for the sideyard and combined sideyard setbacks because the lot on which we propose to build a new home is a narrow lot. It's a 34-foot-wide lot by 140 feet. And the home that we're requesting, we're not asking for a variation for FAR or height or front yard setback. We're making the home, as you can see on the material submitted, sympathetic to the neighboring homes with similar materials, styling, porch, that type of thing. And as it will sit, it will be a modest home, less than 2,000 square feet. But because of the way the lots were planted, there's just simply not the room to permit a construction of a modern home on the lot. And that's why we're before you to request what we hope you will find to be modest and sympathetic requests for the variation.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me start. I noticed that you're tearing down the existing house. Are you using, are you, do you plan to use the existing foundations?
No, it would be a new foundation. The home, as it sits, is very similar to what we're doing. I think the new home would be two feet wider. But because of what had transpired, the, yeah, we would just be doing a whole new foundation. The basement, the way that, the prior plan to save the home would have been, the ceiling height in the basement would have been seven feet. Then you would have had a soffit that came down maybe 10 inches. So the basement space where our daughter would live would be a little compromised and a little choppy. So we do have to do a new foundation at this point.
But, so the new house is two feet wider than the existing. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, exactly right. The new house, the old house is two and a half feet from our western neighbor. So now we're able to slide it a little bit a foot to the east so that we give a little more room to be sympathetic to our western neighbor and put the home more equidistant from both neighbors. And I should add that I've talked extensively with both neighbors. They're very supportive and excited about the project. And I think in the packet that Lisa Roberts might have provided for you, they're both in support of the new home that we're proposing.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just so that I can understand this. The sideyard setback variation is a result of the new walls and foundation? Or is that because of where the chimney sits?
I think it's a factor of both. Both the sideyards, the sideyard setback, as I understand it, is five feet from each neighbor. So we do achieve that for the neighbor to the east. And we're about a foot and a half short to the neighbor on the west. But like I said, we're gaining a foot from where the home presently sits. But I think the overall factor is the combined sideyard setback because the lot is so narrow, the way it was planted, that we can't get 15-feet combined sideyard setback that might exist in larger homes in a different area.
Okay. And this is purely from my own notification. What is going on with the current home? Did they, I hadn't seen it, and I went by it coincidentally a week or so ago. I thought it had burned down. Did you just remove the exterior of it?
There was, without belaboring it, the prior permit was canceled because there was a, our architect had done the calculation. And we had a misunderstanding or disagreement with the zoning administrator for the village. And they thought that removing the stucco was a was a part of the house and not just a covering. And that should have been on the calculation sheet, the demolition calculation sheet. And they said that our architect had erred in that respect. I didn't, I, it doesn't matter whether I agree or disagree. And the only solution then was to raise the home and build a new one. The idea initially, and we were before all you, probably two or three months ago, really was to save the home and prevent a new home being built. That wasn't our goal at all. We, you know. But now, the only solution is to build a new home because of the construction factors with the basement height, with fire retardation, all these different factors with the home being so close and the way it was going to be constructed. There's just, at this point, no way to save it. Our architect did suffer some illness, and we just couldn't revive the plan with him, and we had to start anew.
Thank you.
Am I correct in saying that the sideyard setback is to a great degree, a function of the fact that you have a bedroom in the basement, and you need to have the window well extend into the side yard as a way of an emergency escape, I guess?
Yes, the basement does have a bedroom in it. So the home is modest, so all the bedrooms are small. And so to get any separation in the bedrooms, we have to put a bedroom for my older daughter in the basement. And so that is a requirement that the bedroom window be an exit. And the way, only way to get an exit is to install a window well with an emergency ladder. And that's exactly what we're doing to comply with the code. Right now, currently, there is no, in the house, the way it was constructed, there was no window well or emergency exit ladder. So the house overall will be, in my opinion, much safer and much more functional. And, and I know our neighbor to the west is gonna enjoy the footmore room that we'll make.
Any other comments or questions? This is a new house, and we always try to understand why, when you plan a new house, albeit it has constraints given the width of the lot, why you cannot comply with the zone, with the requirements. No, I, I'm not saying, I think it is possible. I think, I don't know if the members here recall, and maybe Ms. Roberts remembers, I think it's 17th Street and just north of Isabella. It was a 25-foot lot. Do you remember that, Ms. Roberts?
I don't off the top of my head, but it may be infected.
It was very, very narrow lot, I think 25 feet. And they managed to, generally, I think, comply. I think they did. But in any case, we don't use those things as necessarily as these precedents as guidance for our decisions here. But, but we do feel that if you're starting from scratch, you have a 35 by 140-foot lot, why could you not plan, make the plans that do not require variations?
That's an excellent question. That's in my packet. The simple answer is that we're trying to make a house that's livable and feasible. And we took great lengths to do that. And I think that's, that is evident by the fact that we aren't asking for an FAR variation. We are not asking for a front yard setback variation. We're being, in all other respects, compliant with the village requirements. And so if you look up and down our street, none of the houses meet these standards. And it's very hard on the way that our neighborhood is platted. And I think there's ample evidence in the packet of belief, just like ours. It's not a, I think it's a matter of degree. So yes, you're absolutely right. You should try to maintain the standards that set out in the code. 100% agree with that. And I think we've done that for the main part of this, of this home. So really, what we're trying to do is center the home on the lot, create the spaces between our neighbors' homes that is respectful and sympathetic and is approved by them. And we are taking the smallest bite out of this apple that we can to have a modern, efficient home that will be enjoyed by not only us as 25-year residents in Wilmeth, but by the next owners of the home. They don't want crowded hallways. They don't want crowded bedrooms. And believe me, we do not want a crowded, large home. We are downsizing from just west, just east of Green Bay Road. And this is, this is, and this is really a, we are trying to make this for ourselves, a modest home. So we took the smallest bite and took the greatest lengths to consult with our neighbors and comply with the code. And I think we've achieved that. And I think our neighbors would congratulate us and thank us for that.
Mr. Brown, I'm confused. You say that most homes on your street do not comply with the current code. And yet, under point B in your letter, the last sentence reads that most homes do comply.
And that is, that should be amended on its face because obviously, I mean, better proofreading, cannot comply, do not comply. Thank you for noticing. Yes. But it is evident, if you survey the, that whole area just west of Green Bay Road and just north of Lake, it's, our, both of our neighbors, neither one of them comply. So, well, and I think the neighbor to the east is a foot and a half off the lot line. And our neighbor to the west might be two feet off that lot line. So we're all kind of pushing up against each other. So we did as best we can to be, to get centered and to get space from both of them. And I think that's, I think that's evident from the plan that we submitted. And I won't play poker and say, well, then we're just gonna tear the, we have to tear it down.
Another question. Where will you locate the condensing unit?
Oh, we don't have a condensing unit. Like of the air conditioning, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, the air conditioning is on the plan, and it is in the rear yard, not the side yard, because that's not allowed under village code. By the way, our, the, our neighbor to the east actually designed the plan. And she placed the air conditioner closer to her house to be sympathetic to the other neighbors of the west. So that was her, that was her doing.
Any other questions for the applicant? So just a question. This is, you intend to live in this house when you?
This is our downsized forever house. We've had five homes in Wilmeth, so this, we promise, is our last one.
I was looking at your wife while you said that.
This is it. This is it. In fact, I'd enter a consent decree that we never appear before you again.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Do we have anyone that is, any other comments from anybody, Ms. Roberts?
I don't believe we have anybody else in the meeting for this matter.
Okay. Looking for a motion then.
I'll move to recommend grant a request for 126.47 square foot or 2.66% lot coverage variation, a 1.5-foot side yard setback variation, a 2.58-foot combined side yard setback variation, a 2.58-foot combined side yard chimney setback variation, and a 2.58-foot combined side yard window well setback variation to permit the construction of a new home at 1605 Elmwood Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
A second? We need a second.
Second.
Very good. Second. Thank you. Mr. Pelleton?
Well, I, I struggle a little bit with the, the one particular standard which I think Maria referenced, but for a different reason, that is B, the plate of the property owner was not created by the owner is due to unique circumstances. So when you're building a new house, you're creating your own issues. And I think that's sort of what Reinhardt was getting at. I am sympathetic, though, to the fact that these yards are so narrow. And we don't have, I grew up in Washington DC, and one of the most famous houses in the Georgetown area is only eight feet wide. It's possible to have a very narrow house. And somebody mentioned that, you know, was asking Lisa about other houses that were also very narrow. I think Reinhardt was talking about that. But this is a new house, so it's a little different. The other houses, your other neighbors are non-compliant, but older houses. I think that this is a very nice plan. I think the plan works for the neighborhood, all the reasons that you stated, and works for the neighbors. And while I struggle a little bit with the fact that I think ideally, we say, well, you're building a brand-new house. You need to be able to structure it so you can comply. The hardship here is due to the fact that the lot is so narrow. So I can support this.
I also struggle with this case, given that it is entirely new construction. And I recognize that the hardship is that the lot is narrow. But I do believe the house could be designed to be built to fit the space. And I'm going to wait to hear what my colleagues on the board have to say before making a decision.
Well, that's unfortunate, because I was really hoping, hoping to hear what everybody else wanted to say as well.
One addition?
I think we have, we have.
Closed testimony.
Okay, no problem.
So, Mr. Falco? I'll, I'll jump in, because I'm feeling the same way. And I'm coming down on the side of where Ryrie came down after his analysis. And for me, in the end, it comes down to what the neighbors are saying, believe it or not. Because they've got to sell their homes at some point in the future with a home that arguably is closer than it should be. And they're saying they're fine with that. So everybody is with eyes wide open, seeing what's going to happen. They know what it will look like and how it will feel, and they'll, they willingly agree to suffer whatever those consequences are. So I'm willing to support the application with all of the hesitation expressed by Ryrie, and I think even from Maria's comments already, that this is something of the applicant's own making. But 34 feet is a narrow lot, and this is a house in Wilmeth of 2,000 square feet. That is a relatively small house in Wilmeth. And if you're gonna make it work, every inch does count. And so I think I can support this.
Didier?
My comment would be that if you had decided to remodel the project, the side yards would still be.
Didier, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Yes.
I've got my mute off. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, barely.
Lean in, lean in.
Okay, so what I was saying is, you know, if you've decided to remodel the house as opposed to build a new house, you would still not be in compliance with the side yard setbacks. And it's a very narrow lot. So I, I understand what you're facing. And I do believe that bringing a new property onto the street is a good thing. And I do agree that trying to keep it as narrow as the existing does make all the rooms a little bit out of date. And I think adding the two feet is not a large number in the big picture of this narrow lot. And I will support this.
Thank you. I also thought very carefully about this, as I said before, because you're starting with a blank slate, and you know what the requirements are ahead of time, and the architect does. And it should be feasible to design something that is within those boundaries. One of the exceptions is the, or variations requests is lot coverage. And you can, 126 square feet, and you could, the front porch is seven by something, and you could almost get 100 square feet out of reducing the porch. So it is not, I'm struggling here, because it is not an insurmountable challenge to comply. We did, on Poplar, we did four townhouses that I believe are 20 feet wide. It can be done. And so I, I'm struggling here. And I understand it's a narrow lot, it's in a, but to be consistent with the adjacent houses and so forth, it may not be a big ask. I can reluctantly support it, but I am, I am very much cognizant of when we do these things, especially when it's a new construction, that we ought to, we're not setting precedent, I understand that, but it does send a message. And I am, I will support this, but I am very reluctantly. Thank you. So having none, can we take a vote, Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this will go with a, as a positive recommendation to the, to the board of trustees who will take this case on, on June 8th. Thank you very much. I think we need to have another motion here.
Yeah. I'll move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2021 Z19.
I can second that, or Marie can?
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick? Nope, sorry. Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you. I think we have two more items of business, meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, April 7th, 2021.
I second.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
I'll also make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, April 21st, 2021.
Second.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Mr. Pelleton?
I want to hear what Ms. Norick has to say first. Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Ms. Roberts, do we have any, any public comments out there about anything?
I don't see anybody else in the meeting, so I think we're good.
Thank you. Then I, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Brad Falco.
Thank you. Sorry. Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you. It looks like we may have a busy meeting next.